You know, I'm getting cranky.
Well.
Five. Did it actually start being?
I don't know.
God, it's very interesting.
So.
We have. We have.
All right.
What good?
Good.
Start now. Okay. Good now. I can make the. I have an actual.
Okay, everyone, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. We're on line now. Thank you all departments for submitting these. And.
Mr. Bernard here. Mr. Lloyd.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here. Um, so. Uh. The auditor, Martha, I suppose we should start with the line item here of what we have. One demand and. To start.
Mr. Chairman, it appears like most everybody has submitted a response to the email that went out. And I've blended the two emails, but I see some of them answered the questions, some did the others. So appreciate that. Thank you all for helping out with that.
I. Thank you. I suppose we put, we zeroed out wrongly. We left a mandated amounts. Um, and I think it's probably best to start with the departments and get those numbers. We do have, we have, I don't know that we have all of them. So, uh, if we go back through, I don't think we have commissioners. Because we're going to start. We have any.
I, I would say leave that where we work for, because I think that's the number we all set upon.
So that the last.
Delay by our cut.
All right. Thank you for.
Question.
Receive treasures as in on sheet I gave you in paragraph three. I'll just read it to you. Ready?
Well, we, uh, we're not yet yours yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I guess my eyes are off.
It's okay. Go ahead and start. Which is. We. That is. On my screen.
One million, two fifty-eight, oh, twenty-two, and thirty-two seconds.
Dan, so where is it?
Uh, right on the front page.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's the same number.
Okay. First. Thank you.
It's right here.
Yes. One million, one hundred seventy-five dollars. Even. Excellent. Thank you.
Two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Even.
Yes.
Right? All right. On the face.
Nobody here from them. We keep doing with the same because they were staying previous year.
Seven, seven, two thousand ninety. Notes.
Seven, three. Seven, three, seven, two, zero, nine, zero, point, three, nine.
Seven, three, seven, two, zero, point, zero, point, three, nine.
See, David. Coming.
Can you hear Saliba? We had him.
Four. Actually. Yeah. Thank you.
He was. I should. I should.
It's different. County courts. Uh, I got. Uh, that's Eastern Central Court. Yeah. Eastern.
Is it?
County courts, Eastern and Central Court. But what?
Leave it on our number then if we, they're on here, if they didn't dispute it.
Municipal courts. About this last time, these are the courts that the courts don't have access to our county. Maybe you should just add what the municipal.
Leave, leave it on our number again then.
Order collection. It's two million, seventy-one, thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars. Two, zero, seven, one, two, four, two. Continue. Thank you. Financiar. Nine hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, our general fund departments, that's also part of the office, the utilities. Sure. Sure. Yes, EA.
Uh, so five hundred thousand. We believe we'll need five hundred thousand to try to operate. Now, we have some unknowns. With longevity being in our operation and that could be those four at one turn.
Our panel. Two hundred thirty thousand. And one. Two million, seven, oh, two, two, nine, thirty-two. Dan. Even. But this is for. About what? So the conservation. Half of it, everything went out to them.
Same number. Study possible.
Two. Couple neighborhood partners, this is that for me. They think. That.
Fifty dollars.
Validation is. Five thousand. I was great, I mean, receiver thing, but. Yes, sort of. Sort of.
Fifteen.
Airborne.
Thirty-five.
At State Collat.
Same number.
And then two million dollars. And.
We're gonna shave six point nine million off of that number that we just had. Highest amount so far to shave. So. So. See, there's some disparity. Anybody want voluntarily jump in and shave a few more bucks off before we shave?
I have a question for sure that. Uh. I've written a very long minimum budget. Now, the next shave, I'm in the middle of my first half tax collection. It's going the worst tax collections ever went. I got seventeen boxes of mail downstairs to process. We normally work overtime starting this week. I have not started the overtime in fear of, uh, budget restraints. Uh, do I continue to go in that course and not start over? And the reason that we run overtime, we do two hours of minimal overtime. Each day at the end of each workday, two hour minimal overtime. Because we're so busy answering the phones, taking care of taxpayers, working the windows during the day. That that two hours helps us get some of the mail caught up. When that mail gets behind and it sits there and is waiting to get processed. The phones ring off the wall with people wanting to know why their check hasn't cleared the bank yet, why their bill isn't paid yet and everything. And not only that, I believe the auditor in previous meetings or Mr. Carriage in previous meetings has mentioned that. The longer it takes us to close the collection, the longer that will draw out the settlement, which will cause other agencies not to receive their monies. At a time that they're used to receiving their monies. My basic question is, do I continue to run with no overtime with the uncertainty of what's going to happen with my money?
How long do you foresee that the overtime would be needed? My first question.
The part that bothers me about mentioning this is if you look at the overtime numbers I've used over the past four years. I don't succeed twenty-one thousand dollars in overtime. I'm talking about a twenty thousand dollar. Amount of money that. But if we're being asked to scrape our budgets to anything that we can possibly scrape onto. Twenty thousand dollars is a figure. Uh, you know, I'm sitting on the same desk chair I was sitting on twenty-one years ago when I came in here to come to work. We don't do anything frivolous in that, in that treasure.
No, I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is. When you, when you have overtime, then you're opening checks that get deposited in the bank, which gives us interest rates, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, right. So, I, I mean, I think we have to take a hard look at that because sooner you can get that process, get that in the bank, then more money we can earn, correct?
I don't, that's, that's what I'm asking. Is your answer, yeah? But I'm asking.
And, and I, I guess so my, my question to you is, don't you think that that would be a wash, that we would be cool, the overtime with, by putting that money in the bank a lot faster?
Well, we've made record interest numbers in the last three years. We agree with that. But the record number interest that we're making is due to the economy and things that are happening in the U.S. economy in today's world. The U.S. economy right now is a powder keg ready to blow up. We're not going to go to a zero interest in the next month. We don't have a crystal ball. I unfortunately seen it happen. I've went from one year collecting an average of twelve percent interest. Three years later, worrying about paying a negative interest rate to put your money into the bank. That's how bad it got in a three-year period. So when we talk about interest, we give you the number that we feel we're going to make. We have given you a less number this year than last year's interest rate due to the volatility that we're seeing. Especially in the stock market drives a lot of things that create interest numbers. We're seeing a large amount of volatility there and so forth, so. But in answer to your question, when I get money into the bank, it's in the bank, it's gonna make something. If, if anything, it, we have an offsetting cash balance account with Huntington Bank. So the more money I have in that offsetting cash balance, the less fees I pay to Huntington Bank for certain avenues of fees that we pay. We've been successfully not paying fees for almost two years now with Huntington Bank. But if that deposit goes down, then those fees can come in.
So without overtime, how long do you foresee that back?
Without overtime, I drag out the collection a month.
And, Martha, you're in trouble, honey, out here. And, uh, just to reiterate what, um, Sam said, or Trager, or Mufasa said. So we have, there's a process that happens where we do settlement on, uh, he has to finish collections. And then my office does settlement on the, um, local ente. When he's talking about local entities, we're talking about townships, we're talking about the villages, we're talking about cities, we're talking about school districts. They need their money to function too. And so delaying that delays that. Now, we can do, and we do, um, uh, advance it, but we can only advance so much. So if you have a township or a village or a city or a school district that's waiting for their money. That's harder on them and that's part of what we do is the county and our mandated services, what we do and what he does.
Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush and Resources, Brian, I think this could probably be easily summed up in answer, Trager, Leon, he said. Is your one point two eight, two point five eight inclusive of the anticipated overspending needed for? So commissioners, the budget that he's giving you, the one point two five eight, that's what I was waiting to ask. That includes this anticipated overtime, okay? He is already at bare minimum. If that, if we, what he's saying to you is we can't lower that number anymore and still offer the services and get everything done timely. Is that correct?
I, I appreciate your assumption around that. That is dead correct. You know, I guess what I'm saying is in a different way, the only scrape I got left is the eighteen thousand overtime.
Sure.
And, you know, these numbers aren't.
Yeah, yeah, like.
They're gonna happen. They're gonna happen. I guarantee. I mean, it's, this sounds rude to say, it's pretty easy to write a budget for my general fund expenditure. Because ninety-one percent of that budget is salary costs. Once I know all the salary costs, it's over. I mean, it's, it's not like I'm spending, uh, thousands and thousands of dollars buying, uh, pens and stuff. I mean, I only got ten percent left, and now you take that ten percent, I got a ninety thousand dollar cost in sending out tax bills. I mean, I don't have, the budget that I'm giving you and the numbers I'm giving you are based on ninety-one percent of employee costs. That's it.
I think that, you know, Mr. Self, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify. Um. Should we take what we gathered today? Each of us kind of look at it, see where we're at so we don't go around. It's kind of hard for us to make decisions right now.
I think in all fairness to the department is, we should hear them out on whether just fun like Sam just did. Then release them and then sit here and then figure out where we need to make the cuts.
We just let.
Not to mute, not to, not to bait, not to spew, just give them, let them give their best pitch on why they, why they submitted what they did.
That's deeply appreciated by me. I can get back down and work on that tax collection.
Hi. Martha, you're in trouble, honey, out here. Um, I would suggest. If you don't want to have people.
Sure.
Because you're gonna be weaker like before.
Oh, like we just did with Sam, a couple of minutes and then you speak your piece. Do we have questions on it that we can ask? And other than that, you're free to go.
And you can email me or call me anytime with any. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I really want you to know on the overtime. Same thing.
Okay.
Do you want to do it for a minute?
Might as well. But you're not going anywhere.
All right. Um, so do you want? A phone call back up to me or do you want to go to?
I'm gonna start with you.
Right. Um, gentlemen, I've given you, like, seven pages of our statutory mandated services as well as critical services. Um. Several of those pages are devoted to information technology. Um. We support the statutory and mandatory critical services across the county departments by IT. Get, can't pay a bill, we can't get a paycheck, we can't write anything. Without our IT department. IT is more than fifty percent, salaries are more than fifty percent of my, of my general fund budget. Um. What we've given you is we spent time, the three of us, you heard, Christie and myself spent time, uh, reviewing our initial budget request. We shaved it down to three point, about almost three point eight million dollars. Below that, we would have to do layoffs. Um, it's also important to note that two hundred sixty-four thousand of this is for those tax gap salaries, which. By the Ohio, we are sorry, by the Treasury General Paying, are, they have to come out of the, um, financial. When it comes to tax map, that is a mandated service and we are probably lower than we should be as far as standards, yeah. Um, also want to point out that three point, we bring in three point two eight six million dollars. So when you're talking about what we're actually asking for versus what we, it's just a little bit more. Um, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of our budget is for the independent auditors for the yearly mandated audit of the entire county. Not just for, not just for us, but for all of the. Um. Yes, as I said, we have statutory duties, we also have critical duties, which, which we are IT services. Um. Did a full review of this to see also where we could do potential layoffs and have those on there. I had a, a bottom line figure, but I'm gonna, we didn't have to do that. I did. Uh, but once you get below, if you get below the three point seven, we have to do, uh, we will have to do layoffs. Um, we only have so many people that we can lay off that are not critical to our operations. Um, as I mentioned, it is being mostly due to the general fund, um, the council deserves our capital wages. We have also started to get, uh, implementing cost saving rate. Chief Deputy Auditor Tim Hinterford, I've never received a raise for his initial duties. When he was promoted a few months ago, his pay has also been frozen. No overtime or comp time for employees unless there is a critical need for it. Every purchase that we made now requires my personal improvement. We're also working on other cost-saving ideas and other ideas to improve our revenue, but some fees aren't moving this night. We can't include it.
Okay.
Any question?
One question. Last year, three, three, you're only asking for four hundred more thousand, but you absorbed the payroll of seven employees, two from payroll and five from tax.
Not absorb, we did not absorb the payroll ones.
But in your initial.
Initially, we did, initially, we did, we went back, we went back. We did, we went back, we went back on that and put those back under each other.
Okay, is that acceptable to do that?
It's, well, what, it's not, it wasn't a mandated.
Yeah, I guess both of you, because it's both your part.
It's not mandated for it to be where it is. It should be, it should be under ours, but, but understanding that we need to work for it.
If it means that we're not gonna lay people off, then I'll continue to absorb my budget for the time being.
Can you accept that?
But that also means for commissioners that you realize that we are, I'm operating on pretty capable for a very large firm. And I will continue to only be able to operate. Because my monies are expended on other, but if that means that we are going to save those jobs from the layoff, then I will be willing to do my part for Trump County. But we need to grow the sound.
Absolutely.
Okay, because it is taking monies away from my staff as well.
And that's where, Mark, you're, and that's where, long-term, some of the other ideas that we have will help with that. Um, we did talk about this before we just did it. We didn't just do it. The other thing that we looked at more closely under tax map is that we took half of the actual draft salary as opposed to half of the department. So, we felt that, we're looking at that, we thought this is the better way to do it. This is compliant, um, and still saves the general funds.
Now, the, the five that are coming from tax map. Can we still do something similar like that with the county engineer and let him pay half and we pay?
First, why you need to understand, the positions themselves are combined positions. They are GIS and tax. We are still going to need GIS. We are going to end up probably, and I don't want to talk too soon on this because we're still working this through with the labor trade, right? But it will probably, uh, the engineer's office will, it will just be tax map and you will absorb those salaries. So, we're gonna be two or three people. I'm guessing three at this point, based on what we know right now, but.
Uh, page three. Yes. Okay, and of course, the twenty-one and the one, yeah. So commissioners, what she's saying is, as you're looking at page three, she's anticipating that these employees will have to come.
Right, and but they're your thing because they're combined positions, and it's just the tax map portion that has to be paid by general fund. Not the GIS, the GIS will still continue to come from our RE. So, um, when we get the split, which we are anticipating or trying to do this year, it will, that will change, and it will be, uh, we'll be funding either two or three total employees as opposed to half of five.
We're gonna have to keep moving on because we'll be here all day.
Yeah, Commissioners, Bill Danson, Prosecutor's Office. Um, I submitted to Commissioners, I just copied the auditor to, uh, sort of a one-page uh, summary on our mandatory duties and the brief explanation of our budget. And there's, I think, five more pages of explanation in terms of our, the actual function of our duties, the comparison to, uh, other counties, the comparison to, uh, just to get general how our office functions to other departments and other things like that. What I would say is the budget, the reason we have not reduced our number is our, our budget request is made based on solely staff, existing staff, and the essential supplies that we believe that we're going to need for this year. We've included no capital improvements, we've included nothing new, nothing out of the ordinary. So, it's really hard to see how we could have a reduction to that number without having to sacrifice staff. And I, I think one of the things that you guys might see as you go through our more detailed explanation that I will spend all my time reading through explaining right now because you have it. But the way our office functions with all of the different statutory mandated functions we have, those employees are all necessary in the process. If we cut the criminal division, then we have less criminal staff, criminal prosecutors, and our criminal prosecutions are gonna suffer. Frankly, we're short-staffed on civil division already. Um, it's, in hindsight, perhaps, of a state that we haven't come to the board in prior years when finances were better and tried to add staff that we could perhaps think about cutting this year. Um, we've got essentially right now two general civil attorneys handling the legal advice for the entire county, every elected official in board, and every township board and official. And it is, uh, I think some of the people in this room know that our responses are not nearly as fast as they used to be. And, um, you know, that, that's just, that's where we're at now. Uh, whatever the commissioners decide, we, we will certainly take that under advisement. I'll take it back to Prosecutor Watkins. Uh, but I, I welcome the board to go through what I, what I provided there with Prosecutor Watkins and I provided. I'd welcome you to go line by line through our spreadsheet that we provided early on in this process. Um, I just, uh, you know, after working through this internally, we don't see any room to go, and certainly no room to go without a reduction in staff.
Bill, I gotta ask, there were two positions that were paid for by grant, and they were only there because you got a grant. That grant's gone, now you want us to absorb those as permanent employees. You didn't have them before the grant, when you operated. Now the grant's expired, and we're expected to pay for them additional, pay for the additional employees without the grant. That's an extra two hundred fifty thousand or more. I mean, your, your budget's up a million. I think you said you had about five hundred thousand of them total.
Well, that was over two years.
Over two years, but that's something. They're, are they essential? They're not essential. They were bonus because they were getting, you have paid for by grant. Now the grant's gone. I think that's something we need to look at in that department. I don't, don't want to, but we're being fed all departments. Those were bonus employees because of a grant. Now you're asking the county to absorb their salaries full-time since the grant expired and you didn't renew the grant or, or weren't awarded the grant any longer.
Sure, I can give a brief explanation to that. One thing, and again, I, I invite you guys to look at the paperwork I submitted there. One of the things to keep in mind is that that grant was through the, um, through the federal government, state passed, there's arco money essentially passed through that we applied for, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one of the reasons that we had that grant was for the retention of employees because what they found, and you can check with other prosecutors' offices around the state, we have a hard time finding attorneys who want to come be local county prosecutors, assistant prosecutors. That grant was to help reduce the workload and burnout on existing employees to allow us to get and attract qualified people. We ended up attracting a qualified attorney through that program. To do that, it's also a way that we have a succession planning. We don't have, we have.
Are they both attorneys?
No, one's an attorney, one's an investigator to help assemble the stuff for our attorneys. Uh, that attorney that we have has about ten years of experience as an attorney. Many of our staff members in our office, many of our staff attorneys have twenty-five to thirty-five years of experience right now. We face a coming problem here in the next couple of years where we are going to lose to retirement in the next four years, which I know seems like forever right now, but the next four years, we could lose five attorneys with thirty years or more of experience. And this is our way to help attract and retain those people for succession planning purposes. And the fact is, they're still busy. All of our criminal attorneys have a significant caseload. I, I understand what you're saying. We did not have them before. Uh. But we believe that it is a need, and that's why we sought out the grant or something like that. Uh, but again, I, I think that, you know, those are all, those are all things that I, I tried to explain the best I could in our, in our materials there. For example, I know we've talked, you know, in open meetings too about other counties, Portage County. Portage County, I know the commissioner already said that they have the same budget that we do. Uh, but they also have forty thousand less people. If you look at the numbers of attorneys in their prosecutor's office across the board, division by division, their website lists four attorneys than we have here in Trump County. So, I think that those are things that, for our purposes, for our planning, for our, for our caseload to be manageable and to do, to continue on with having a good record of our successes in the criminal division in our office, things like that. These, these are, these are important positions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mark.
So, I gave everybody a letter, um, just roughly outlining everything. Everybody's left or right, we can see the numbers. Um, I just talked a little bit about that, you know, we're not at full capacity, we're, we're not trying to go to. We're not, you need. Mark, CFO, sure. So, we're not trying to expand or do anything right now. I mean, we could use twenty, more and more deputies, fifteen more correction officers, vehicles, not asking for that. Um, third paragraph, I put our core duties and where, what we have in service, we had by, and a number there is, you know, basically not changed. Alex was nice enough to really help us putting together a, a spreadsheet with, uh, all the healthcare, all the costs that our employees are gonna be with all these raises that we have coming to their contracts, their union contracts, we've got what we can do. We got unit five coming in. It's gonna come at a significant raise, and then we got the correction officers coming up, but Alex helped, helped us estimate that, come up with the numbers that we have come up with, and so we understand the situation you're in, but I mean, as you said before, you know, towards the other year, as more money comes in, you help the department, but it's, uh, I mean, we're cutting services if our number gets cut in further than we have at the twenty-five. I'm just showing you where our numbers are estimated with this. On the budget, on the line items, we're going through every line item. We're looking at anything that's, um, expenses that we can cut. Already cut back a lot of overtime, and, um, uh, we're just looking at expenses across important, trying to cut, so that we don't cost accounting anymore. We have to, but again, ninety percent of our costs, like most of you here, is employees. So, you know, really, like, comes down to that services. Piece of the budget there.
I guess, I guess really, Mark, I don't know if you really hit the mission. You were sitting in all the meetings with us, and Martha said you got the line, then you got the other line, where you would have to, to lay off that two point eight.
Well, if we do that, if we're.
If the previous sheriff spent eighteen-five, you're more than two million dollars more than him. We didn't give two million out raises in one year, did we?
Well, you ask Alex, we sat down and we went through. Uh, also, she included if there are possible payouts, right, Alex, the payouts of the vacation and that.
I mean, I didn't plug the numbers in, Commissioners. Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bushing Resources Department, I gave them the circumstances that I gave to everybody else. Theirs was a lot more complex, because they have six different clinics that have all different ranges, and it's not a straightforward, it's not just three percent per year. It's broken down by quarters. So, I mean, some of them are very complex. Uh, not to mention, they have hazard pay, shift differential, they have, I was in one, um, that we also had to include, bake into their hour, their hour salary. Um, this is probably, to what Markanning is saying, this is probably assuming that everybody's doing the long, we went through person by person to see who could do take, take, or take in the overs conversion. Um, they do have a very senior workforce. All right, that was the one thing that stood out to me a lot, was they have a lot of deputies who are at the higher end of pay. What that means is, they're top, they're making quite a bit of money, right? Their conversion is higher than those at a lower end on the scale, and so on and so forth, and I, I can't help solve that. We have a twenty-seven-year deputy, it is what it is. Um, outside of that, we factor in healthcare, the same thing that everybody else factored in. I did not see the spreadsheet at the end of the day. I, I mean, I left it again to, to finish, but I mean, I did help them obviously set it up and compile a bit of it, which took an entire day. Um, so I believe that if they plug the numbers in, that that is what that number is, um. Can I say that it's two million dollars and just increases in, in K, in health insurance? Uh, no, I think that what happens is, is you have to remember, the more the pay increases, the more the overtime pay increases, the more everything goes up. This is the reality. Commissioners, you also have to remember, eighteen percent. Most of your county, actually, ninety-nine point nine percent of your county is at fourteen percent first, okay? For sheriff, sheriff department, all six contracts, they get eighteen percent. That's a significant, that's a, that's an additional four percent on top of what does us, right, employees get, right? So, yes, their costs are significantly higher. Also, their workers' comp rate, way higher, okay? Because of their force, that the forces in job, they're doing. So, that nice clearable point oh nine percent that we pay for workers' comp for all of us sitting at a desk doesn't apply to them. They have a significantly higher workers' comp rate.
And we, we, administrators-wise, all the new administrators that came and started at the rate the last ones were at or higher, where they had started and worked their way up over eight years to get to that wage, but you're starting at where the sheriff left off with new people. Is that common? Is that normal? Is that, does that hurt us in a way that we're top end of work before?
Well, you're, yeah, with your, your administrative staff to come in, but you're talking people that are, you know, have four years' experience, so way more than what the prior ships have. Experience as far as their executive staff.
I'm just asking, just laying all the table to see where, why it's so much higher, how it's so much higher.
I think we're over, so.
Okay, I think we need to, we need to keep moving. I said we'll be here all day.
All right, thank you.
Mark, thank you.
Johnson, can I, I'm a reporter. I accepted the assignment, became a little bit slower, met with Alex and Christie, um. So, my payroll is pretty much one point one million, I think, one seventy-five. I have a position still open to report office, which I will not fill as of now. I also have found a way to bring in about fifty thousand in part to the general fund by implementing the file officer charge. Implementing it has a. So, that's, we pretty much figured out everything that we do. Uh, I have the records department and the records for the prosecutor, sheriff, commissioner, auditor, so, uh, and everything that we do is intended, there's nothing on the intended.
And then the only additional, Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bushing Resources, the one thing to really consider with the specific quarters budget is that a significant amount of the revenue that they bring in goes back out to the housing, uh, housing costs, yes. So, um, they're at bare minimum.
And we bring in about one point two.
Any questions, Commissioners, any questions? I think that's pretty clear. Um, Doc, there's a unique corner. So, I have the opposite problem with the youth. A lot of my staff costs less than fifty percent, and then my variability is based on the amount of cases we do per year. Last year was a moderate year, and, um, our budget was just under one point two million. The increases are mostly staff raises and health insurance. I could give you back money now, but if we get busy, then I would need money in September, November. I have no way to fix that. Plus, we have a situation right with the temporary board where things pop up, five or ten thousand dollars that we expect to recover isn't a set situation. Till we get that stabilized, I'm kind of worried.
Yeah. Very well understood in your case, Doc.
Uh, I could give you money back now, I don't know.
Questions? Sure. Questions? Um. Judge, Louder? Judge?
Yeah, Judge. Uh, we've been through, our, our budget's slightly unique from everyone else, because we actually have three budgets. They call it family court. We have the twenty-four second detention facility, we have juvenile court, clerks' office, urgent department, probation department, as well as necessary. So, ours is, it's kind of combined. So, we went through, we had some costs, some liabilities, various things. I looked at, I looked at some of our. I looked at, I looked at some of our reviews for miss licenses, things that, that we're covering that typically you got the juvenile, general fund items. So I, I looked at moving some of those over into into our special projects funds where we can, so those funds were developed and they're designated for certain things. We can only do certain things with funds. So those, we moved some of those over, we cut, and then we have four positions that we are, we were intending on them. However, we're, we're not going to, so we were able to cut from our originally submitted, we already cut two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and four cents. Part of our budget, and I don't know how you, can the auditor's office account for it, but over over eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, thirty-two, twenty-eight cents, and then another thirty-five thousand are payroll that come out of grants that we receive. Last year, in twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-four, I moved as many diversion, probation officers over to grant for a reclaim grant for their payroll as we could. The unique thing about how we get funded through reclaim brands, the more work our people do in diversion, probation and different programming and keeping, you know, and not sending juveniles to DYS, kidding person. For those who don't know, and we keep them local and local programming, more money we get from the state. More we send down there, they subtract from what we get. So if I lay off, my staff are granted because of work that they do, they help generate funds. So as I'm looking at it, that's about where, you know, we can cut. And like I said, that's over three budgets. But I guess you just can't keep on, but it's, it's all the same pot. The other, the other thing I noticed was the doctor for the detention center. Looks like that almost doubled. So they thought of at least twenty-six hundred dollars a month of what we pay. And I know there was some issue with his malpractice or something like that. I know that part of that goes to, you know, for his total for Trump kind of jail. The, and, and ours, now I don't know if you can buy that at three. I mean, it really, it, it probably doesn't matter for the general fund and things. But if you can buy that at three, I can guarantee you, we probably get, we don't get the resources. We probably get very little of the services like there is in the U of M coming to jail. Be that as it may, it still comes from the same pot. So, you know, what, what does that matter? But there are certain things that we can. And like I said, we are implementing e filing, which hopefully, once we get that in, it's got to go live. We secured a grant for that of almost fifty thousand. Yeah, a little less than sixty thousand dollars in that, that covered most of the costs and get that straight forward. Hopefully, that'll cut down on something once we get it fully. Cut down on paper, cut down on postage, because everything that way would be electronic. So, you know, that, that's future. There's no way that I can tell, because, because I probably will save money there, but then they'll jack on some licensing fee or something along the way and, and, and we'll look at that, but so that's.
I, I only want to say that after last meeting we had, I had the opportunity to call the judge in. Then we had a pretty good conversation and he's looking down the road. He, he understands our problem. He's got some ideas and he's going to try to help us out down the road. Fortunately, it's not immediate. Oh, but he, he, he gets it, he understands it and yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you.
Well, and, and to Tony, to Tony's point, a lot of our big numbers, a lot of it largely comes from detention. And there's a plan that I, I, I can't really say what it is. I've talked and, and some people know what it is and it will significantly change how things are done. And the state of Ohio, as long as it keeps funding us the way they fund us now, we should be able to implement that at almost their cost, not the county's, which would save a lot. But, but that's down the road and, and a lot of this program that we're doing now is to take those necessary steps to get to where we want to be in a year and a half, two years down the road. Yeah, it's just like the, the man for, you know, the posting. I don't know how much we can save, hopefully we'll save money. Uh, I know this other thing will save a lot, but it's just something that has to be going step by step.
It's just refreshing to be that, that you're looking at those steps to try to help us out.
Well, you know, and that's where juvenile justice is going anyway, what they want us to do. And it just so happens that it saves money as well and, you know.
Commissioners, Phil Danso, prosecutors office, I have another meeting too, I'm going to have to go to. But one thing that I didn't mention during my little presentation that is something maybe the commissioners want to at least think about, maybe talk to HR about is is counterintuitive as it may sound, because I know we have been working with Clemens Nelson and other consultants a lot for different union issues and things like that. One thing that the commissioners could talk about is perhaps funding a part-time, even no benefits position in the county prosecutor's office, but trying to attract an experienced labor personnel attorney that we could perhaps try to reduce or eliminate the cost of outside consultants, but actually pay a little bit less because it would be a person that would be in-house on call on some sort of salary structure here to county. Again, that's something that we've talked about just very preliminarily internally to help save, not necessarily saving in our line of budget, but saving overall in the general fund. If we can figure out, we can, we want to think, figure out how much has been spent on outside consultants, how much have been, what could the savings be? But I, I could see a world in which there could be a savings by considering bringing that back in-house rather than outside. So I just wanted to leave that thought in your minds too, and I'd be glad to discuss it further. Something that, you know, again, I encourage you to talk to Alex with HR also because I know it would really affect HR too. So just a parting thought, and if you need me, I'll, I can always come back after my meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so no questions. I will exit station.
Thank you.
I can immediately. Not bad though.
Randy. Commissioners, Alex, just because that was brought up, and I would have said this here, but uh, last year, actually over two years, we only extended thirty-six thousand, just so we're aware. So over two years, thirty-six thousand dollars. I'm sorry.
Melissa Benyon, child community services, child support. We spent nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents for Clemens and Nelson last year, plus we had to pay an arbitrator five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and cents. And they've been in this year, that, that's just child support, it's not even JFS. And with the longevity issues that we're having, we'll, they'll, this year, so just to.
But what I'm trying to say is a part-time would not suffice. That's what I'm trying to say. So if you would have just, I know, I get it, but let me get to where I was heading.
I'm surprised at that number.
Well, I'm going to give facts. It's not ten thousand a month, it is very minimal. And the services that we're utilizing for commissioners is saving you money in the long term. So your choice, you would like to cut legal costs by all means.
I was surprised, I thought it was a lot.
Including, but not limited to, charges that I fight and save us money on OCR, EEO, ADA, FMLA, multiple lawsuits in this county that we have successfully won, to be played ranked. Outside of that though, we would, the amount of time, and I was getting that, that we, that they expend on all of our different entities would probably be two full-time employees for public jobs, easily with full-time.
I have another question. That doesn't include what, what the commissioners pay.
No, that is what they hit, you pay them thirty-six thousand dollars.
Total, every commissioners and you, everybody?
First of all, yes, it was thirty-six thousand, nine hundred. Okay, I added all the invoices myself that a certain commissioner, public record requested, and they should be in an article about how it's ten thousand dollars a month. So again, it was thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars over a two-year time period.
That's shocking.
Arthur, you had us budget six, or we have upcoming negotiations.
But you have to remember, we typically only engage their services for those specific time periods, like she just said, for contract negotiations, for C S E A, for arbitration. So.
That's specific situation. And she's not, I mean, I don't think she's going to pull up. It's just a relationship.
Because she spends very minimal time on our accounts, we're listing, so. I just want to be honest with you, you're going to hire at least two full-time employees for the prosecutor. So your choice.
I said I'm shocked.
We save you a lot of money, we do.
Or if you had to pay out there and, and ours was set smaller than other than we had some issues.
They paid off, yeah, absolutely.
They were able to do some things.
Good, next.
Hey, sorry. Randy Law for reports, I apologize, I misunderstood. I didn't think you wanted this. So I didn't even have a lot of my paperwork. I did submit everything in a summary. Did everybody, did everybody get that or?
I thought you said it's everybody, so. That was something.
I was in close, some issues, all kinds of things.
Hiring. No, 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 nonsense.
Realizing. The total was about one point two nine, does that sound right? What I submitted. I had to, in a summary. I guess we should go through this. But I apologize because I'm going to.
Or equally for supporting all of our departments, so to you.
You want to do that, move on to somebody else? That'd be. More tiny question.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no, I just didn't realize I said.
Perfect, thank you. Heather B. Cabbage, County Board of Elections, commissioners. Every bit of our budget is mandated by the Secretary of State. We base what we requested of prior elections, two elections a year. The last three years, what we requested, we came in one percent every single year. We got cut, we had to come back to you and we were able to get through the year. You're always cutting and paying at the end. There is nothing more we do, we're hoping this year, once again, that we're going to have two elections. There is nothing to say. If there's a special election in August, we have to come back to the table. We run it administratively, everything, but every single thing is mandated by the Secretary of State. There was no more room to cut. We got through every one of our leases, board or pay, training, anything and everything. And we average it on the exact amount of what we're paying out. We don't have the budget, I'm hoping for, you know, sorry, I think any grant we get, we've done capital improvements. We put all brand new windows in the board and that was without going through the general lines for our grant line. So at this time, this is all.
Thank you, Andrew. Um. And we do realize that.
Alex, do you have this mandated stuff? We have that. We had some stuff.
Oh, sure.
We did, we're, we're, it's very quick, ready to send it, you guys have a favor. We didn't realize a question.
Don't you tell it to search for something.
Yeah, I won't be long. Okay.
Well, Doc, now let's.
Okay. Michelle Gosh, trouble county dog warden. If you guys pull up what I gave you, it just goes over my budget. I was able to shave the thirty thousand as suggested because, mainly because of public donations. And I can go over that in a second, but if you turn the page, I went over our mandated services for you. As you know, we are obligated by law to fulfill our duties as dog wardens. So we have quite a few mandated services at the dog kennel. If you flip over to non-mandated services, we have a couple of things that we do, doesn't affect our budget. We actually make a couple of dollars on it. I did give you our after hour protocol also, and I added up what we spend in overtime. We spent roughly eleven thousand, five hundred in overtime. I didn't think that was a lot for the year. I also talked to all of my staff and anything that we can do on the next business day, things like that. We're trying to cut any and all overtime that we can in our department. Donations to our facility, why I was able to slice that thirty thousand was because the public generously has committed to donating our dog food for the year at the dog kennel. So that shaved off twenty thousand dollars to our facility roughly, probably more now. Our vaccines and everything for the animals are donated by a local rescue. That shaved off about four thousand for the year. The public donates everything out there, laundry soap, dish soap, paper towels, cleaners, disinfectant, dog toys, everything, anything and everything that we need, the public donates for us, for that facility. Monetary donations, probably nineteen to twenty-five thousand walk in the building or they're given through the dog licensing. I also printed out on the next page, our local rescue, every penny goes to the dog pound. They raised a hundred and five thousand dollars for us last year from the public. So we are bringing in anything that we can. The public, like I said, is very generous to our department. If I cut anything else, another penny, it will be bodies. And as you, as we all know, we cut bodies, we cut service. So we are pretty, yeah, but that, I, I'm lucky that I was able to shave off that thirty. I also went into, I printed you guys off some stuff on maybe some additional ways we can generate revenue. I know that myself as a department head, I can raise our adoption fees out at the dog kennel. We've been wanting to do this for a really long time. Our adoption fee is really, really low, it's one of the lowest in the counties. So I think in, at the beginning of March, we are going to implement that. And then I know nobody wants to hear it, but we can also raise, we can talk about raising the licenses.
Right, and Mark, you're a trouble county auditor. Now, that really won't help much this year.
Correct.
It will help, the dog license season goes from December first to technically February twenty, or I'm sorry, January thirty-first. And then we do the extension always to February twenty-eighth. So basically we end up three months. So it'll, it'll generate some revenue. And then we do the extension always to February twenty-eighth, so basically we end up three months, um, so it'll, it'll generate some revenue. In that first, if we raise it, or right now, we're at eighteen, um, our, I have to look really hard, and Asheville is lower.
Asheville is really low, Asheville is twelve, Mahoning is twenty.
Okay, no, that, dog licenses. What do you think? Is it twenty?
Mahoning's twenty, Asheville is twelve, um, Lake County's twenty, um, a lot of them were eight, you know, around roughly eighteen, um.
So last time, why since we raised?
I am not sure.
I have, you can look that up, but it's been a while.
It has been a long time.
How much are ours?
Ours are eighteen, right now.
And it's a discount, I think you paid for like three years or something like that.
No, 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 three years for people.
I know I paid my three.
The lifetime, you can get a discount.
Lifetime is the discount. Right, and it, so that does, I mean, if we do with.
How many dog licenses, so?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Free, free, uh, free hundred. Oh, I did print that, I did print that out, though, because we would, if we raised the, um, kennel license, um, or I mean, the kennel, or. The license tags to twenty dollars, it would roughly generate, according to last year's numbers, roughly about thirty thousand dollars. You have to take into consideration too that, you know, people that purchase the lifetime and people that purchase the three-year, you can't count those in. Um, but roughly thirty thousand a year would generate also.
It looks like you do a lot with donations, so.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have you. Uh, Martha, you're a trouble county auditor, and I tried very hard, uh, I said to the previous board, I prefer the carrot to the stick. Meaning I would like to try to encourage people to clients rather than, um, come down on people, and that costs me to come down on people as well. Um, I try, you know, I've done some little, you know, things that I've actually paid for. Uh, extra dog licenses to like give away as raffles, like that, to try to encourage people to get their license. We've tried very hard to get more, um, engagement as far as our, um. Our vendors and things like that, I think where it's. But we've tried very hard to just do it, because for people, it might.
Well, I, I just think generally, the dog pound needs some attention, and I think once you start showing that, then just make that issue too.
Sure.
We have to show up. Yeah, if the boards want to do something too.
Yeah.
And I think the general public would be all right.
I think so. Okay, thank you, have a good day.
You too. That's what Tacey didn't have too long.
Uh, Tacey, we go on nine oh one, um, you guys had suggested about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cut, um. I mean, I can make that work, that's what you ultimately decide, but at the end of the day, I would have to come back to you for a capital budget request for two-hundred-thousand dollars. Because we need new servers, they should have been replaced back in twenty-twelve, that's gonna be around a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The state of Ohio is doing a Marx mandated radio update.
No, the capital budget isn't included in any of this, right?
No, what I'm saying is, is if I take your two-hundred-thousand-dollar cut, I would need to come back to you later with a request for two-hundred-thousand dollars, and do you think we have to do? That's what I'm saying.
Right, we're only talking salaries here, we're only talking general fund stuff, not capital.
Right. Let me finish, please, um, we're eighty-six percent wages. We are at eighteen full-time dispatchers, I have two off on extended medical leave that just happened, emergencies. So that leaves us down to sixteen, with one supervisor, four probationary employees, one part-time, and two admins, which are Patty and I. Um. We're coming in, my request of the wages for the employees for dispatch is the one-nine-two-five, um. That is including the overtime assumption that we're, we're making, we, we make a rough estimate based on previous years. And if we had the ten additional employees that we're supposed to have, we'd be at over eight-hundred-thousand dollars of an increase, that's supposed to be about three-hundred-thousand dollars for overtime. Not that I wanna live by overtime, that, that, that group's fat, bad, but. On the last page, I'm gonna list our mandated services, I basically just said nine-one-one, I mean, where, uh, you know, we answer nine-one-one for the entire county. Um, you do have the other P S F S, uh, Niles and Lorson, which feed into us. But trouble county nine-one-one alone last year handled two-hundred-seventy-three thousand, not emergency, or, two-hundred-seventy-three thousand calls. Seventy-one thousand of those were nine-one-one calls, two-hundred-and-one thousand were non-emergency calls. We touched forty-three agencies, so all our services are critical. We're already working with skeletons, crew of staff right now, with four people on night shift, five on days, and six on afternoons. We need those ten extra employees that obviously we've been, we've been hiring since I've got here, which is over a year and a half ago. Every time we make a little bit of progress, like right now, we have four trainees, and we just got one that was released on their own, then we have issues where, you know. We have staff up on extended medical, so every time we take one step forward, we take three back. We're still gonna need those employees, but ten more employees right now would add another eight-hundred-thousand-dollar ballpark to our quest. Unfortunately, uh, nine-one-one is a technology-driven field that doesn't generate enough revenue, we are not a revenue generating, uh, entity in the county. We are. If anything, we hit, we hit the budget hard. Since two thousand and thirteen, our contract renewals were approved, union contracts, where several of them were approved. But no increase in wages was ever added to our budget. Twenty-twenty-four was the first year that we hadn't seen the increase in several years. What I was able to do last year, we stayed within our budget, we didn't come back and ask for more. Um, I was able to purchase fifty thousand dollars with the new computers and monitors that will go to a new building once we get it, hopefully, um. Right now, our, like I said, our servers need replaced, um, they should have been done back in twenty-twenty-one, it's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars right there for new servers. Uh, Marx is doing a mandated radio upgrade to the state system. Once they do that upgrade, our recording system will no longer work, so we have to update our recorder system, which is ninety thousand dollars. Those are things that ultimately will end up saving you money when we do move to a new building, if we get those now, because we can take those with us, we have to buy them. They're gonna be used in the future when we move buildings. Uh, our Lumen project that we're doing on the network, have that redundancy and remove that single point of failure. That project that we're working on, while going through that, I discovered that nobody in this county, county IT, anybody even, has the credentials to get into the Cisco routers and switches. Nobody knows those logins. So that's put that project at a complete halt. And I'm gonna have to hire a nine-one-one IT specialist to come in and assess our network, and probably figure out how to reset up a brand-new network to make this project happen. I can't. Move forward with that, because if you unplug that, you're gonna break forty-three agencies who are connected to us, and hundreds of M D Ts that are out with police cars driving around. So these are the things that we're discovering in nine-one-one, it's a mess over there. We had a dead mouse get caught the other day running around the dispatch floor. We had, you know, maintenance is taking care of that, I'm not saying anything, but anybody, I, I welcome you before you make your budget decisions to come and walk through our center and see what we're dealing with. Um, since the inception of nine-one-one in trouble county, my only suggestion for you is, I know we don't wanna raise taxes. But since the inception of nine-one-one in trouble county in nineteen ninety-four, we have never asked for community support for our help with the services we provide. Our call volume is solely driven by the population we serve. We're in dire need of a new nine-one-one center, and honestly, can't wait any longer. My strong recommendation would be to place the twenty-dollar per year assessment on the parcels. Uh, that would be ten dollars per six months per half, it's a flat rate, it's not a millage that's gonna fluctuate by how much your house is worth, it's a flat. Twenty dollars a year, and I know, no commissioner, no politician, nobody wants to raise taxes, we're all hurting financially. Um, but if you would go, put that in front of the voters and let them decide if they wanna approve it or not in November. That would bring in between three and four million dollars a year, which would help.
No, sorry.
Your notes changed.
It's unimproved, it's unimproved, I thought I confused about this area, it's unimproved parcels. Not all the parcels. It would be, I would, I would say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would say about just, um, what I know as far as improved, and we were trying to get an number for you on that, but I believe we have about a little over eighty thousand. Improved parcels, is that, is that right?
So about one point six?
Yeah.
Okay. Even one point six, if I had one point six a year, guess what that would do? That would pay our bank bill for a new building, that would pay for our technology upgrades that we need to do. The reason we're in this boat right now is because for fifteen to twenty years, things haven't been kept on a rotating cycle of improvements. You have to update that technology, you have to buy new furniture, they're not wants, they are necessities to the job function. Um, so ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we're at eighty-six percent of staffing, we can't cut staffing any further, we can't cut bodies. Because we're already well below the state recommendations for where we should be. Our feasibility study that came back, they said we should have forty dispatchers, forty. We're working with eighteen.
Yeah, we know, Tacey.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I'm just.
We, we understand.
I'm not willing, I'm not unwilling to make cuts, I'm just saying we really can't make cuts, we're already bare bones.
Martha, you're the county auditor, in looking at, you have the server replacement here under non-capital, it's a capital. It's not a compromise.
We, we budgeted for it and included it in our budget because. Trying to take care of the things we need to get done, and not have to come for special.
I understand, but this is not great. And so I think, honestly, the, the commissioners can do what they want, they obviously can put capitals, expenditures over there, that's what they want. But you said a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So one twenty-five for that and ninety for the reporters.
And I'm, I'm thinking of reporters, because we're talking about, these are not yearly expenses, these are not yearly operating expenses, those are.
Yeah, our, our yearly operating expenses are CAD license fees and those types of things.
Yeah, the things that are.
And, and those are, you know, eat up the rest of our costs, I mean, our, our CAD cost every year is a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, we have. We have Marx fees that we have to pay for radios, which are like ninety thousand dollars a year for radios.
But then two hundred and fifteen thousand really isn't.
Yeah, so if you wanna cut us to the two-five, I think that you had recommended, that's fine, I would just have to come to you for a capital request for those two big purchases. To get those done, and we're at a point, so everybody had been complaining in the county why we haven't had the upgrade to our CAD system that we've been waiting four years for. They can't physically do the upgrade to our CAD because our servers are so old and outdated, so we have to do that in order to get the upgrade. And like I said, those things could go to the new building with us, if we're blessed with a new building.
Probably redirect those two hundred and one thousand non-emergency calls. I mean, we got rid of them, that would.
So there's, there's AI software out there in the nine-one-one field that is being utilized today. But those things, I'm sure Tim can speak to it, are not gonna be cheap. They're gonna be something that, it's gonna cost us probably a, a lot of money upfront to implement, but yes, we'll be.
Which we get it, though.
We've been paying dividends for years.
Yeah.
But it's one of those things too, of our network right now, if you would see, I was literally on the floor today installing new computers. And thirty years of cabling under there where a vendor came in, put new stuff, and didn't clean up the old stuff. I was working on one system, and next thing you know, two pods over, he lost his computers, so then I had a trouble shoot, I was black and dirt. Coming over here today, so what? To be honest, and I know you don't wanna hear this, because it's gonna cost money, we need a new building, so I can clean slate it, we can do a fresh install with the networks, fresh equipment. We can run it with good networking, where you have patched cables, where you're running six-foot cables, instead of, we had daisy chain cables that were twenty-five feet long. A plug into a plug into a plug, and then when you take the panels off the back doors, there are seven to eight or nine power strips in there, which I sit there and every time I. It makes fun, I have palpitations, because I'm like, I'm just not saying.
And I think, I think everybody here understands what you need, but what I'm saying is, when we go to make that switch.
That's the time we can implement that.
Redirect these two hundred and one thousand calls.
Hundred percent.
Get rid of those, and that's gonna make your life a lot easier.
It, it's not gonna save us on budget, because we still need bodies at the consoles.
Correct.
It's not like we, we don't have someone just a call taker right now, that's absorbing that.
The model we wanna go to is call taker dispatcher, but to your point, yes, one hundred percent, I would do that in a heartbeat if we move buildings, because that's the time to do it, when you have a fresh install. Tim would agree with me, I'm sure, but those are gonna still cost money, what it will do, Denny, is it'll release the burden on the dispatchers, they will no longer be as far out. They're dealing with a bunch of BS calls that shouldn't be coming to us.
Commissioners Alex, Steven, Johnson, Bush, it will save, and here is why. The feasibility study, which I read all four hundred pages about feasibility study, was very clear in winning that forty-four dispatchers were needed to support the amount of calls. Inclusive of the non-emergency calls. You have to remember that, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know I read that, so if we did not, if we did lessen the burden on those non-emergency calls, yes. That forty-four number may very well have been a thirty-four number, or a twenty-four.
But it's still. Fifteen more than what we have, eighteen more. So, in the big picture, it's not saving.
Well, no, it is, but, yeah, it would save, but either way, there are things that we should be doing now, Tacey and I have talked about this. We should deny, the non-emergency number should not be included on people's websites, we have them all over the entire county, I've looked them up myself. It says if you have a pet emergency, if you have an after-hours emergency, or, you know, non-emergency, I'm talking on life threatening.
All nine-one-one. The simple solution for me is, if we move to a new nine-one-one center, I want a brand-new phone number. Because guess what? That's gonna break everybody's system in this county, who rolls their calls to us, and it, we're gonna be, they're gonna be told. This is the service we provide, we are nine-one-one, we are not your utility billing for after four-ty. You can hire an answering service at your small department that has an automated thing saying, if this is an emergency, call nine-one-one, otherwise, call us tomorrow from eight to four. Because that's what needs to happen, and for so many years, when you look up in Google, the number written to us, or it's a number that spider webs to us. So, the short answer is, nine-one-one is never gonna cost you cheap, you know, it's not.
We know what you need, you just gotta figure out.
No, no, and, and I appreciate everything you're doing, I just, I didn't want you to think I was being combative and, and not willing to cut, because we're willing to cut, it's just, we're already at the bare bones. For the service.
You're right after this year.
But I appreciate your time, and, you know, if we can answer any questions, but I do implore you guys to come and take a look, see what we have. I think it would, I think it would really be, be home though, be home though.
And also, Commissioners, just one final word on this, Alex, Steven, George, Bush, and you're just very, some of those two hundred and two thousand non-emergency calls are driving overtime, too. We have to look at everything for what it is, so I'm not saying that's the magic, but I think we've known that for a while. If there's a way that we can lessen the burden there, even incrementally small, you know, ten thousand less calls, and then we get to twenty thousand less non-emergency. Any little bit matters, and it matters for these people's morale and health, and overall attention of these people too. So any little bit that we can do, we have to start pushing, like, we have to push. Take our number off our website, dog calls, I get it, but it's not a nine-one-one number, it's not, you know? And it's on our website, it's on our own website. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I mean, I appreciate.
Hold on a wait, is that so?
No, no.
So I know how soon.
We're hanging up, we're hanging up by thread, we're hanging up.
Thank you, Tracy.
Randy.
Randy, you okay? You sleeping on this? Uh, you guys have the summary, uh.
Yes.
Remember, this is for our civil division only, we have five funds we draw from. Our overall budget is three, three point four million. Uh, comes out of, like, explaining at previous games, the majority comes from the title fund and self-funds over there. And most of the operational expenses across the street. Uh, down the road, we got four of them, they should, uh, come out of our computer fund. So we basically. Operationally, other postage probably have about ten thousand dollars in expenses for, in general fund. Only because I can't be, be face of those on the computer. Or I try and take my own computer. Um, the money's there, to do that, we try and maximize that care to do the actual job, and we're helping to enhance. Um, if you look at the, uh, chart there, uh, I've asked for one point two eight seven. If you look at the current screen bias budget, it was one point two six nine. So, the year of increases, we've only got up about eighteen. Uh, you know what the increases are, I'll touch on it real quick, uh, you'll probably look, Tacey, you only spent one point nine one. Uh, part of that was winning some of it, a good chunk, as I mentioned in the summary. Because, of course, our union contract, much like everybody else who's in our union, didn't get signed until January. So five months of retro pay and bonuses, all are paid out of this year's budget. Um, that wasn't budgeted, because of, you know, this year, I was hoping to pay for it last year. Uh, I've also had free, you know, healthcare, you know. Uh, I've also had free, you know, healthcare. You know, I've got three lovers in the air apparently. Marriages and, uh, good things, but, uh, not that I encourage that, but, uh, it, it, it costs money when they up their hospitalization plans. I've had three in the civil division do that basically the last six weeks. Um, possibly that's going to work. Um, it's part of our personnel. Um, I guess, uh, as you see, I put the exact number that I had in the other day. We pulled out of the general fund over to my title fund. I've got four employees who have about, probably fifty percent of their salary benefits. Uh, salaries and benefits being paid out of title funds, so we don't have to take them out of general. Uh, I maxed that pretty much all like we do. I could do more. I do more and I can spend certain dollars on certain things. And certain job descriptions. Uh, we have pre-union positions on the civil side. We have not billed. Uh, we are at pretty much max. Uh, I'm sure there's an employee over there today who's sick. Certain things are not going to get done for them. We're going to do everything we can. Courts aren't going to shut down. But I'm just saying, everybody's kind of maxed on the responsibilities, much like other departments. We're not, we're not unique to this here. Uh, but we do have a certain reports. We do tool, uh, as I said, we serve seven full-time courts, along with law enforcement and the public. Uh, grand jury reports, we have secret warrants, we have things all the time. It's got to be done and only certain people can do certain duties over there. Can't have everybody, uh, grand juries, secret grand juries, secret indictments, things like that. So we all have call ops, we all have vacations. Uh, but I can't have everybody in on those type of things. So sometimes it puts a little bit of a burden on things, but we, we are able to make it work. Um, I'm not looking to hit three. I'd love to be able to hire at least one more person this year. I never sleep, you know, that's not happening. Until all the, all the economic boom comes in here. We all love to see it. Um, other than that, I guess, if you have questions, um, I'd be glad to ask. I've answered them. I think we try to stay with the day when we can. I've also proposed, uh, uh, saving a few dollars. I can't give you a dollar amount. We don't have access to job descriptions and things like that, but, you know, the Eastern Central, Eastern and Central, and some of you guys, we can clerk those two courts together. Without combining courts and all that, that's huge. It's a great court in the legislature. Uh, we have to sit down and talk about it in that long term. Uh, but clerking it is a statute for responsibility of clerking courts. I know we save one salary, we save a month. We can do it. I know we can do it. Our duties are all very similar. We can make that work, but it's such a lesson. Any questions on our budget for what we can do, can't do? Majority, like everybody else, eighty-nine percent salaries benefits. And then postage. Uh, I could cut that on post. Then I'm going to come to you and say, we've got certified mail. It's got to go out to the courts in November and December and around postage. You know, if you want to play with the numbers that way, I'll play along with that. Uh, this factors in, but not only what was spent last year, but postage increases. It's just a fact of life. We have to send out a lot of certified mail. Mail was brought up by, uh, Treasurer Lamarcusovak, uh, by the way, and I did speak with him in the hall. So so you don't have the wrong impression. He didn't mean to be that way. Uh, we do run our mail across the road. On my four locations, we want, run one mail operation. And some of you also participate in that, and everybody's welcome. If it's, uh, saves you money. Uh, leasing off machines, uh, just put in your code and reimburse us for the mail. That's fine. Our four locations do make a mail rather across the street every day, and we do run it out of one. So Sam didn't mean that we weren't doing that. He just wished everybody to do one mail. Uh, that's something you might want to look at. It may work for people. It may not work for every department. I can't say this one time. But, uh, something to look at, and I don't think we're running three postages and paying, uh, a lot of money. Well, we are paying a lot of money to pay those. I think we all are, but, uh, our department runs more, so. Any questions? Sorry about the inconvenience. I misunderstood.
Excuse me. You have a cyber security meeting. Thank you.
They got the statutory stuff here.
Doing homework now or?
They got, what, what it basically says is, their board can give raises and set salaries based on the money that comes in from the commissioners. They have a budget for what they need to do. And it says here that, uh, we have an obligation to appropriate money to the board of elections. If we fail to appropriate enough, they can appeal to the Court of Common Pleas, which will look to see if we need to give them more money or not, based on them looking at salaries, looking at the big picture things that it needs to get done. And it says that, uh, that we, we fund the board and the board can adjust the salary, salary increases, the bonuses based on money left over from what we, what we give them. So they don't do it and then tell us what to give. We give them money and then they work within a budget that we give them. Um, and this is something that there are Board of Elections in every county. They all do about the same, the most comparable, every county of every agency. In every county, we may have differences in number of law enforcement deputies, size of a jail, the number of court cases, things like that. When it comes to Board of Elections, that's the most similar. And there are other counties, I guess, that boards counties budget is one point five. And, and I know the, the raises that were recently were brought up as a, as a thing, and we got all the feedback from the public on that recently. Um, that is based on a amount of overtime their board picked in a busy year of the amount of overtime they have, but then they have three years where they don't have as much overtime, but the raises stayed the same. They're not paid differently each year. They're paid based on the busy year is what they appropriated the overtime wage to be. From what I understand from Mr. Aubrey said when he was sitting here. So in that one presidential year when they had twenty thousand dollars overtime and they up the raises to be that as the base fee, it was considering that year and not the other three years of overtime where it was. And overtime is said there at department heads, like all our other departments, they can flex time within a work week to avoid overtime situation. As they were paying overtime, which they shouldn't have been for years, we established that, that that was against policy and procedure as department heads, but they were getting overtime based on their board allowing it. And I guess the other boards didn't catch it. Didn't say anything about it every year. But when they went to the, the county system and now they want to comply with that, there is no more overtime. The salary is set where it is. They still get call time, but the, where they set the fee, I believe, was set by their board based on looking at the overtime they gave in years. They weren't supposed to give it anyway, and in the busiest of years where they set the salary.
Basically, what you're saying is our discussion should be with the board and not with them.
Correct. And I don't say they didn't do anything wrong.
No, no, I, that's what I'm saying.
The board is what allocated that, but the board, I think, misinterpreted what they had on here and said that.
And that's my point, yeah. Yeah, we shouldn't, yeah.
That's nice. Right, yes.
Nothing to do with you. And you were grant point, Andrew, if anything was misinterpreted through the paper or anything. You guys do a fantastic job with what you do, and our elections are a great year in this county. But it's just the administration where the board administers the stuff. And there were mistakes made even recently, and that the board has to assume responsibility for stuff, not you. You, you work at the discretion of them. But we give them the budget basically to set stuff like this to make sure it functions correctly.
I must say, they did a comparison over all AB eight counties. And it's not my job to go and, but many pay salary, overtime, and cost. I can't imagine that in three AB eight counties. And I think we would get audited, the auditor's office, right? Don't they look at payroll when they audit us?
But they're not paying.
They're fined if, aren't they ever?
They were in parents. We can get audited by parents.
Okay, but how about our state office? Is there ever?
We don't have, they don't have any more external. Uh, as we're party firm, but they sample size. They do a sample.
Uh, for over twenty years, they.
And they're not, they're not, they're not. I just don't know how. They're not looking for complaints.
No, they're just looking to see if you're paid based on what.
Well, again, our discussion should be with the board, not them.
Right, thank you.
Right, and, and the other thing is, you know, we need, we need to give a clarification with the board. Not with they hold you and us, but they're going to do what they want to do, and if we don't give it to them, they're going to get it.
Right, and that's, that's absolutely wrong. For the second, third, they don't make it. This year, right here.
You know, I mean, once you, we just need a clarification, bring them back in and set them down and say, you know, that's not what that says it means.
Well, I, and I don't even think we need that. I think we could set the budget based on what other counties do. If they want to take us to court, they go to the Court of Common Pleas if they need to. I don't think they will. I think they'll act accordingly within the budget.
I, I think they will. Commissioners, I, I, I'm, I think they will.
And when they run out of money, then they're going to have to justify the overtime. They're going to have to justify everything they've done wrong in the past. I don't think they're.
We still have to fund the election.
We do. We do.
And, and, and they know that.
Right.
So, so I think that's why we.
But they can't, they can tell their directors, you get a million dollars. And said, they can't tell us, well, you're going to pay them that because you have to fund the election.
Well, that's reasonable.
We have to pay them a reasonable amount to function and do that. And that's probably why they're not union. That's probably why there are things, so many things set with ORC. They have to do the election, but no one says they have to do extended hours. No one has to say they have to do.
I think it does for early voting. Early voting is.
Okay.
They're identical.
Well, and then bespoke on that, but there are things like, like this year. I pretty much guarantee you, they're not going to send a sample ballot to everybody for the primary or the general this year in a non-presidential year where there are all these absentee's coming in from all over the, all over the county. Be based on what the Secretary of State sent out. So that is reasonable man will think that's a lot less work. They're not getting all those ballots in the mail every day. They're not getting all the pressure of the big year race where they have so much on the line with ninety thousand voters. This is a year where it's an off year where they're going to have, I think, based on two years ago, they're going to have thirty thousand voters, you know, in, in an election. Well, that's three times less work, you would think, but they're still paid at that one year where it's excessive, and they're paid those three years leading up to that. So that's where it should have been cost average.
That's why I think we need them in here to say, look, your analysis of what you can get, how much you can get, doesn't necessarily.
Right, and Sam explained it the best. Sam got the budget. He's like, right now is the time where I'm getting slammed and I have to do it now because he's got a little window. There are certain times, Sheriff's Department is busier than our times. There are certain times, Mr. Law may be busier at certain times. First of the month, I'm sure, probably busier of JFS with John, or, or there are certain times that we all have cycling things. I understand that election week, that timely, that's busy, 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 but you could have, you know, maybe you don't work Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning. If you're going to have extended hours, you know, you flex your time around to avoid twenty thousand dollars in overtime in one year, then, then the board say, oh, we'll just pay you the twenty thousand, go with salary.
I, I understand.
Okay.
Right. Commissioners, Julie's here. She's patiently waiting.
Yeah, I provided each of the commissioners.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to pay Ray more next year too. He, he ought to be on the payroll for as much time as he spends in this state with us.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. I provided each of the commissioners with our, um, summary as requested and a printout of our budget. The initial budget request we submitted in November was one million, one thirty-five for twenty-nine. I have cut twenty percent from that, giving me one hundred thousand dollar payment for Hydrola. We discussed that briefly and I'm not really sure about the, um, status of those funds or what the board. Um, and I don't know what we gave in details on how that came to you. We are the designated office of economic development and because of legal advice, that funding or that payment has to be filtered through our offices.
But we should have a line somewhere like we have that five hundred thousand we did for Valley Vision. The last board did a three-year agreement, a hundred thousand dollars a year for Hydrola. So maybe we should already have that set aside in the budget somewhere. Yes.
Kristy Sesterich, Auditor's Office. The five hundred thousand is coming from sales tax. I'm sorry, I kind of separated it. We could do that with a, not sales tax, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they have to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, we could do something similar if we want to say that the Hydrola is coming from one of those funds. And not part of the John.
But it would have, it would have to, would still have to go be a transfer from that to the planning commission and then.
Well, we don't have to necessarily budget it to her on that. I can just.
We could put a line down here by the Valley Vision. You'll be sure of that.
I mean, we, we, it's three-year deal. We agreed. We did one year. We got to continue with the other two.
I would do that. I'd also put that to lead for special projects down there.
It is down there.
It's down there. Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's.
Remember it's in and then out. It's or out and then in.
Yeah, it's.
To special projects?
No, it's the clerk of court to be designated.
No, I, I thought we were going to put that to special, special projects. Remember last time we said that and I asked you, and you said.
You guys have to do that by resolution.
And that's the big transfer to the, the special fund that you created for this.
You have to create the fund. We, we can't just create a fund. It has to be done via resolution. So you, your staff needs to do it.
Do that. That's, that's.
Please.
Julie, I mean, just looking at what you did here, that's exactly why we wanted to have this meeting today. And you follow the rules, script a hundred percent. Um, our, our recorder did the exact same thing. Our dog pound did the exact same thing. And the treasurer, yeah, treasurer, even the coroner shaved twenty-five grand off. So we have many departments in the spirit of what we were supposed to, did the right thing, and we appreciate that. So I mean, those are the ones that I would say right away. Hey, if you, you volunteered, like if a kid, you're getting disciplined. You tell me who did it, the punishment's going to be less. You know, one of the kids stepped forward and said, it was me, the punishment's less. And I'm not saying we're punishing anybody, but in the spirit of this, you did the right thing. You worked with us to shave it. So those are the ones I would think, we don't need to look any further on those. They've already done our work for us. It's the other ones where we need to look a little harder now, cut. And there were some that went up tremendously from what we had somehow.
So.
Somehow we had all these people step forward and take the bullet and we're coming up four million more.
So commissioners, um, yeah, I don't need to speak any further. I gave you basically the entire budget and a seven-page explanation. And all three of you have sit on our planning commission and we have our twenty-plus page directives report currently. I don't want to keep you here too long. Um, maybe I should advocate for a little bit longer, but it sounds like.
No, but we've had some meetings recently and believe me, the three of us realize the importance in the professionalism out of your department with what we see down the road. Economic development wise, you guys are designated, designate, or represented well in that. And if we had more money in this, speaking on behalf of me, you would probably be the first department that I would reach out to personally to say, go get us more and you keep doing what you're doing. Here's a little more fuel to your fire. Unfortunately, as you know, we don't have that, but we do appreciate what you're doing with what you have. Um, definitely a team player for the county and we are going to see some great benefits down the road because of your department and the diligence of your staff.
Thanks for the team.
Sure.
Even the arbiters have, so many arbiters things have playing commissioner's fingerprint on it as far as, uh, funding.
Team effort. Okay, we all, we all have to effort.
Okay. All right. Um. You guys, yeah. All right.
I'm going to go spin over here. Um, Melissa, again, Child and Family Services, shelter, for your agency, central officer. Uh, the first thing I want to say is that every service that is provided at child support is a mandatory service by those. Um, so what we are looking at, we were looking at specifically in the budget document, I went through. I wrote down in the vendor column where our funds come in from and where they go out to. So that I could look very specifically at what actual costs have been over the last few years. Um, and if I know what those bills will be monthly coming in, I. Um, and if I know what those bills will be monthly coming in, I can more accurately reflect what that expense will be. So in doing that, I also have to say that child support's budget is a little bit different because it's a sixty-six percent federal uh, grant to every thirty-four, each thirty-four percent that is provided by the county. So in any cuts that we make, whatever that is, so if we were, if we were to reduce the five hundred thousand back to the four seventy-five that we were given last year, that difference of twenty-five thousand in the budget is actually seventy-three thousand five hundred. Because for that twenty-five thousand, we're also going to collect forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the federal government. So it's a little bit. It, for us to track, we just have to make sure that we're doing it accurate.
What do we need to? Just because the government get more, it's still taxpayer dollars from somewhere. It's coming back. What do you need to operate? I guess it's more what we need.
So I, to operate at the level that we are currently operating with no extra expenses, we would need the five. And the reason for that is, you know, we've looked at ways to reduce costs, and currently have five vacant bargain unit positions at child support and one vacant non-bargain position. So over the last couple of years, we have already started making cuts. Um, to give you a little bit of history about the Child Support Enforcement Agency, many, many years ago, when I first started, um, in the fiscal department at the agency. We had a a memorandum of understanding with child support, between J F S and child support, where we were able to have a program that operated at the child support office that was tenant-based. So when they received their ransom, example for what they were doing, they couldn't want that they were doing a community activity because they were working on that program. That allowed J F S to give that money over to child support, and it was considerable money. Twice, we revamped the program, twice, the O D J F S and state auditor came in and said, give it to them. So at one point, we were, I mean, it was upwards of six hundred thousand dollars a year that they were receiving of those funds. And so at one point, we did have almost a surplus that has been over the last six or seven years. Um, four years ago, when the union contract came, we still had a little bit of surplus of that money. We had to go back to auditor, Vino at the time, and say, instead of just a hundred thousand dollars, we need a hundred fifty. And then the money went on, which has left us where we are. Because other than that, and the state general revenue funds that we get, which comes July first of every year, we don't have any other income other than this double. So in order for us to operate at the current levels, only doing what we need, and we have also cut other expenses. All of our copy machine center, um, our postage, child support brings all their mail to our department, we process that mail. Uh, starting January first, I made a change to where all of our office supplies are ordered to J F S office. Because what we have at J F S is called a shared cost. So when you look at that shared cost, it's based on a full-time equivalency calculation. Which means that if we're sharing that cost with child support, and the F T E calculation is twenty-five percent for child support, we never need to pay twenty-five percent of that bill, rather than the whole hundred percent that they would incur on their own. Um, we have those. I've already talked to Director Verdana, when the contract comes up in twenty twenty-six, we are actually going to recommend looking at whether or not absentee care is assessing. Um, we currently pay about a a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year for absentee care, thirty-four percent of that, but essentially we're gonna save us thirty thousand dollars. Talked about the state general revenue funds. Unfortunately, at this point, um, my payroll budget, because I wasn't able to get without, like, doesn't include five percent pay increase. Um, so I was kinda juggling that in that. We have already.
No, I, we were gonna get into the John Verdana, the longevity of the fact finding.
Yeah, we're currently in fact finding for the longevity structure there, so we're not sure what's gonna happen with that. Um, so those could all impact this. We are, you know, we have already talked with staff about, you know, whatever changes are gonna need to be made, um, not filling physicians through attrition, you know. So we are working toward reducing that. I will say, I will be watching the child support budget very, very, very closely, especially once we get those general revenue funds in, in July, because we don't ever really know. We could just guess based on last year's allocation what that is gonna be. Um, but once those come in, we'll have a much better idea, and in working with, um, Laura and Christie, you know, if we are able to give back over some of those funds, once we see what that five percent increase is gonna do, where we're at with all those costs that as far as staff costs going to child support, you know, we can certainly do that. But right now, and and we were originally asking for six hundred to make sure that we have enough to cover all of what we need. We have two potential retirements there, which we're gonna create a payout. Um, our fiscal administrator, Mr. Cummings, has pressed a button, so he's leaving, um, March thirty-first, he has a shared cause, so they will, that that vacation is a cash out. Child support, you're part of his, his cash out as well.
Commissioners, Alex and Johnson Bush, you guys are so special. So you know, uh, we did just have fact finding here, and we thought it very hard. Will not know the outcome of that till this point until potentially April, April. Uh, I think, thank you, I thought I was April. Um, and we did at one of our, you know, exhibits that was presented was this exact budget shortfall. So this was presented to the fact finder, that, you know, we thought, but should they award an increase in longevity to C S E A? We planned out, told them they were.
You all have any questions for me?
No. You did a great job. Good. I understand these are held long.
Thank you all very much, very much.
I like what she's saying, she did a great job.
Commissioners, one more thing, Alex and Johnson Bush, before we move on to the next, just because I wanna make sure this was known. Before Clemens Nelson was hired, um, there was an, there was an attorney that we used before that, between the year twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, we had spent one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which correlates to buy that by five years, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So, again, this is nothing new. Clemens Nelson is roughly sixteen hundred dollars more. Just throwing that out there.
Okay, so where are we at now?
Oh, uh.
Just one more thing, commissioners, there is something that, uh, I discussed. That was the indirect cost in the MAXIMUS report. The agency over there, C S E A, when they were doing all these renovations and things, uh, the then recorder was supposed to get part of our building, excuse me. I fought about it, we fought about it, uh, I had to relent, and she got part of that building there. There was no renovation to it, she never took it over. Uh, there's really no use to it for us right now. But I'm getting, I'm getting the expense of that area that I don't have any use for. So I, you know, uh, other Yoder and I talked about it earlier, we have to look at that. We might be able to get some savings there in that, and also in this MAXIMUS report, for some reason or or another, they're saying that we have to pay a part of the maintenance of nineteen individuals. Uh, that I don't think is appropriate, we argued about it before, but it fell on debt theaters. So those are other areas with other Yoder that we might be able to save some of the costs.
Uh, Martha, you're the auditor. Uh, we have kind of on the back burner right now, meeting with Alex, uh, Sarah, Mr. Dan, and myself. Um, I think that's, if there was.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, I'm questioning nineteen individuals.
Well, it was nineteen. We were essentially, we were essentially assigning the cost, a portion of the cost for every name, employee.
I see.
Under the indirect cost, not just the ones that they were sending to.
Do the cleaning there.
Sure.
For that maintenance.
So we were paying, we're paying for a portion of all of that.
Okay, and so we wanna, as a group, we wanna, um, work on that and and try, we're gonna wanna meet, and then the issues that we know that we have, we wanna address with MAXIMUS, so that we can get that corrected. We also wanna see if there are costs that we can recoup that one. But certainly wanna take that, uh, we have kinda had to back burner because of this process. We've talked about meeting, but we haven't had a.
Well, I understand that. I don't want the commissioners to.
And I want the commissioners all to understand.
Correct, and that would be a cost savings in one respect, and if you said it's true on the other.
It would be more money out of the general plan.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, if it's right, it's right. I mean, you know.
Wanna get this right, yes, that's our goal.
Thank you for pointing that out, John. Thank you.
More no hurt change. Just wanted to bring that up here. Thank you for your time, yeah.
We already done it.
I've been quiet, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm dismayed about this whole meeting. First of all, we ask for cuts. We've gone back. We're gonna have to make a decision. We're gonna have to cut our these departments, and whether it's gonna lead to layoffs, or if it's gonna go, you don't, there's we're six million behind. You can't keep having meetings upon meetings, just regurgitating all these numbers. We gotta make a decision. We're gonna have to come together, that departments, and we're gonna have, other than the mandates, we're gonna have to make those hard choices and cut these departments. I hate to say that, that's the way it's gonna look.
I think you're right.
And I, I mean, we're gonna spend hours.
Have to cut some staff. We even have mandates that you're gonna have to, you know.
It could be, I mean, I, you know, I was, I was hopeful in this meeting that we would come together, they would they would go to the point of where the auditor said of layoffs. I don't believe that they have gone, some, not all, I mean, there are some here that, some are still here. Um, there's some that, you know, the planning commission, for instance, I mean, you could tell the people that are working with us. But some of these departments have not gone to the point of layoffs. Martha, had the auditor said, draw that line, and I don't think they have. I'm sorry.
Well, nobody wants to draw that line.
I know, but I mean, but.
And we're gonna have to force them.
But we've, we're out of money, and we don't have the money. I I I've been, I've been quiet because I've been listening to everybody talk, and I've been taking it all in. But, you know. I just, I'm I'm dismayed about this whole process.
There's a, there's a problem. We're mandated.
Right. I, I understand.
Budget with the money that we have.
Yes.
And we're also mandated to make those cuts.
But if they come back to us.
Do it either.
If they.
We can't pass a budget, we don't have the money.
Let them come back to us, and then we'll deal with it. If we have it, if we don't, then, you know, we'll do it.
That question I have.
So much you could do, can't, I'm not gonna say it again, we split out of it, that's what we're trying to do.
Commissioners, if I can before, I just wanna make one thing clear, and I'm, I'm, this is gonna be very unpopular, but I have to, I work with commissioners, and I have to discuss this. Uh, commissioners, one thing that I did not see today, specifically, and this is going to be extremely unpopular, but are we sure, some of people, some of the people did justify it, but are you one thousand percent sure beyond a shadow of a doubt that certain administrators, non-bargaining costs aren't inflated in some of these numbers? Because that's where I really think you need to do an extra deep dive. Some people didn't come to the table and show you those numbers, they just gave you a piece of paper, okay? That's on you as the board to ask those questions. You know how much I make, it comes out of not general fund, but I'm just saying. Do you really know how much, and I'm just throwing this out there, do you know how much the seven administrators make in jail? Do you know how much certain administrators make? Have you looked at that?
No, we haven't looked at it, but.
Because if I were.
But I think, I think as a new commissioner, and it's, it's Mr. Hernandez, we've done everything we've done. This is what, our sixth meeting, so, I, and and we keep coming back, and we've asked, and we've asked, and asked. And now we're gonna have to, we're gonna be here and make a hard decision.
So before we make the hard decision, the one question I have to ask, and I, as of other reodor. You did a great job of coming up with what our budget is, and I know you said that's a conservative budget. If that sixty-six was stretched in your mind of where you think what what you're hopeful we're gonna hit, and where you came in with the number of sixty-six million, what is that buffer? Is it plus or minus a million? Plus or minus five million, plus or minus three million? Where in that budget do you think we're gonna come in? I know you're being conservative with it. And, but where do you think? Where's your red line, red line of what you think?
On that, because we did it, first of all, that's what our estimated revenue is.
So that's sixty-six, when you add everything up, you go into sixty-six, or is it sixty-eight, and you make sixty-six?
We do, um, our sales tax is very conservative on, but part of the reason we're conservative on that is, one, it's variable. Could change. Two, traditionally, you've done your capital projects, that small capital projects, so I mean, if you're going to put a moratorium on a capital project, we could maybe estimate a little bit more, but I I wanna be careful because that's, that's our buffer, that is our buffer.
We had two months last year where the amount we received in that month was less than what we received at the same time last year. And we had one month where we didn't receive what we could estimate for that year, towards the end of the year. And this year already, we've already had one year, or one month, February, actually, where we did not receive as much as we did last year.
But, but the commissioners got some education yesterday. That with Shenango Valley Mall being shut down, and Southern Park Mall having their issues, that there's trending, more people are shopping in Trumbull County now with the loss of those two malls, or with the demise of those two malls. So we are gonna see, and a, and a lot of the retailers are speculating, that we are gonna see increased traffic in our county of people shopping in our county more than they ever have because Shenango Valley Mall was torn to the ground, and Southern Park Mall has their financial difficulties and lost stores. We are kind of the new Mecca for shopping in the tri-county area, or at least. Um, so they are projecting their numbers, we're gonna see pretty good numbers.
But, oh, we can't set a budget on that.
We can't set a budget.
Here's, here's the other thing, that, that.
I agree.
It is, the more conservative we are now, and that's gonna help us with next year's budget. Because next year's budget, we got pay raises, we got all that stuff, it's just gonna compound the issue.
I would rather have much more carryover and 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 be happy with that.
If we have a carryover, yeah, right, because we're gonna need that carryover.
Right, absolutely.
And 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 nobody wants to lay off, but what are we gonna do?
Technically, because Sarah, our auditor's office, technically, without the two million dollars from the court of courts, that top number here, the cash balance, within five million, two hundred fifty thousand, with a carryover cover, it's at two point five.
And I, and I wanna remind you, too, we, when we do have some reserves, but if we have to go into those reserves.
We have an emergency, we have to have.
We're gonna, yeah, absolutely, I completely agree.
Auditor Yoder, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex and Johnson Bush. We are mandated to have so many months of operating, or operating.
Well, what, what we've been able to find is, we, we've actually, Mark, you're. We've actually asked those questions to find out exactly, here's what we know, that if our, at the end of the year, if our carryover and reserve are less than one month's expenses, we are in fiscal law.
Okay, okay, all right.
So when do we hit a point, then?
Okay.
When do we hit a point? No, we know what we know, even if we make all these cuts, we cut these seven million. When do we hit the point where we gotta bring up the ugly quarter percent issue again? And and that is the next step. When do we hit that?
That's.
We're not saying we're hitting no.
We're not.
When does the trigger, when do we hit that?
Here's, here's one of the things we've talked about, of course, we, Mark, you're. We have not had a chance to work out forecasts, we've been so busy with this. But we absolutely, once we get through this process, we wanna give you guys a realistic forecast. So you know, the next five years, where you're. So you know the next five years where you're at, and that will show you. And, and actually, the point where you're at, where the point for fifty-five percent, I'm just gonna say, that's a matter of thing. So, but I mean, you guys will have to judge that from that forecast, I guess, is the best answer.
Commissioners, Alex and Johnson Bush, you're very sources, right, something we really need to consider too, because. Compared to your next one, whether or not we have to. Is, do you all know capital improvement projects are not part of this budget? You really are, what, this is where we get into a slippery slope, anything you take further debt out on. For capital projects is pulling off that top dollar, you see that right up top. We have, I know we're thinking, well, we're taking, you know, we're, it's capital, we're taking debt, we don't have to pay that, but. I need you to really pay attention to that number, because. You're just incurring more and more and more from a five-year strategic standpoint when you're forecasting out. And our carryover is going to be at a zero.
Yeah.
We're almost there this time, to be quite frank with you, so.
We're gonna get where the water comes from.
Well, and again, so we need to think, you really should put, for the time being, I think, again, this is just. You need to look at a moratorium on capital improvements just for the time being, until we get this emergency.
And I think honestly, commissioners, we're going down to Commissioner's School next week, the three of us. I think the top priority on my needs to be, we're associating with all these other counties across the state, asking them. How much debt do you carry over year to year? What is your formula for budgets, what is, I've looked at Esther Beal and talked to them. I've talked to Mahone people in Moaning County, but I think that needs to be our homework assignment to see. What is normal, are there counties carrying ten million in debt over, are there counties that try to be zero, yes?
Christie's is our auditor's office, so just so you know, if you're comparing other counties, you also have to look into where their debt is being paid from. Mahone County, where I live, I have a property tax levy that's for bond retirement, it's not coming out of their point seven-five percent general. Uh, undivided general on sales tax, it's coming from a property tax levy. They don't have to take it off their sales tax.
That's what we need to learn, who's doing what, and what are the other tools in the bag that we don't know?
And I mean, you also will find commissioners, Alex, you've done some pushing, you know this, I'm not advocating either way, your decision is the board, but I am telling you. You know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, you go out right now onto CCAO, you can see how much everybody's sales talks for such checks, okay? We all know that we're in the, we are one of the top eighteen in, in magnitude population in the county, but yet we're in the bottom ten. When it comes to sales tax, so again, commissioners, you know your answers, I hate to say that to you, but you do.
Martha, you have something, I just wanted to write something, because you talked.
Yeah, but we're reliant as far as income.
Yeah.
To the people.
That's true.
I mean, you know what?
That's true.
Some counties don't have a mall, some counties don't shop any others.
It's a high line.
I think the only fair tax, if, if they're.
Well, I, and if I'm gonna do it, that's gonna be my own decision, I'm, I gotta have any input or output from anybody else.
Yeah, we've already discussed it.
That's gonna be my decision, and I got my own thoughts on that, so.
But I think if there's any kind of tax. The sales tax is probably the most fair tax, because it's based on your purchases. If you can afford it, then you're gonna pay the tax on it, now we met with a very influential developer of, uh. I'm just gonna say, the commissioners, has many outlet stores that. You know, participate in sales tax, and even that individual said. Four percent? One bond, a half a percent, I know, no, but I'm saying a very.
Here's my tape, okay, if, if you're gonna do that, then put it on the balance.
Well, you could do that, I mean, it's gonna take time to get it on there, I mean, I, you know.
But that's the only way, I mean, see what the people say.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm not against putting it on the ballot, yeah, let the people make the choice, I don't know, I'm not sure if you would be interested in that, but. I came in here thinking. Right off the bat, seeing our numbers, I'm gonna probably put myself out there again, but. This is gonna be needed, and if they're gonna make that decision, but these, the people have to understand, these services we're offering. If they want those services, it's gotta come from somewhere, county can't afford to keep, keep. Giving these services at these, you know what I mean, at these.
And, and just by saying that, we're gonna take heat for these townships making resolutions, they're gonna hear. But then again, we're not here telling any township.
We're not playing politics.
Don't put a levy out, don't put a police levy, don't put a fire, they're doing the same damn thing we're doing here, trying to figure out how to balance the budget.
The people, see what they say.
I have no, I have no issue with that, what's, yes.
Two things, one, you're correct, the verbage that you speak is incorrect, it is not debt carryover. It is debt service, please understand.
It's our principal interest, Christie's is our auditor's office, it's our principal interest is due each year.
Yeah.
Right, it's what we pay every year.
What I meant basically is what debt do they have in the books, regardless of what the services, the.
Well, but, but that's how much it costs you, is, is really important, maybe ask them how they're paying for their debts, right? Um, the other thing, just to point out, when you talk about point two-five percent. Spend a hundred dollars. That can cost you.
Core.
Yep.
Well, you know what, it's my decision, my decision is, if it's gonna go anywhere, put it on the ballot.
I don't, I disagree, I'm just, I'm just explaining.
Well, I know, I understand, but you know what, I'm telling you my.
I don't, I don't get the vote unless you put it on the ballot, so.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, so.
Where do we go from here?
What?
Where do we go from here?
Okay, just to be honest.
Where do we go from here? We're gonna, we're gonna be gone, Mr. Chairman, I know we adjourned.
Well, before we adjourn, I think we need to set some guidelines with this. I think, I'll go into school next week, we go with our ears and we, this is our topic. All three of us for three days, we talk with every commissioner we can, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Just eighty-eight boards of commissioners that have been doing this for a hundred and seventy-five years in the state of Ohio, so we're not doing anything new. With setting a budget and doing our annual budget, so when we're done, I think we need to. Look at all this and compare what we can compare, look at the options that other counties use, don't try to reinvent the wheel here, like we're trying to create a new idea. Let's take the best of what we can learn, let's reassemble back here as early as I'm okay with, even next Thursday. I know we'll be gone for three days, which we have personal business on Thursday, if you wanna kick it to next week, I'm good with that. But I think then we need to come back after we get the questions answered we need. And then we need to just, we need to act, we need to do what we need to do at that time.
You're, you're really, really good.
That's what I, I mean, the auditor's office. I like where you're coming from, but when you get back, we really do need to give the departments a number. So that they can go back to their budgets and cut on the line, because they're not just cutting one giant number, they have to go through all these comps that are listed for them. And decide where they're going to cut that, then they have to send it to us, where we're gonna have to input it into the accounting system and reconcile it, make sure. And this has to be passed by April first.
I agree with you, but I think we need to limit who's in this room.
Yep.
Your decision, his decision, my decision, I think that's supposed to be.
You don't want us to keep telling?
No, no, I, no, not at that point, let's see where we're at on our own mind, along with Alex.
Is this something you're doing in the executive session? Discuss wages, things like that.
Uh, commissioners, build it, so I don't believe executive session for, for traditional personnel would be appropriate to discuss a holistic budget. And, and cuts and numbers and things like that. Uh, my, my belief would be strongly that that would need to be an open meeting if it was all to be commissioners. However, the board can certainly. Even though they can't limit who attends, the board can certainly limit who participates and speaks, and. Uh, if the board, for example, comes in with a policy that there is no outside comment at all, it is, it is. Observation only if you want to attend, the board is capable, is perfectly allowed to do that.
And we have a question, we can ask the questions and get the answers.
Who do you want the spreadsheet, if, if we're not gonna be here, who'll leave the spreadsheet to have it?
Don't be so defensive, I, I mean, what we wanna do is. Okay, we'll, we'll answer that question, you know, right now, we need to figure out what, what us three want to do, it's gonna be on us three.
I understand that, I'm just saying we need to know.
Well, well, we'll, we'll get you that, okay, just let us think of what we wanna do. Okay, we're gonna be gone, we're gonna be asking questions, you know, let us come back, see how we wanna. And we may open it up, but right now, just, just limited to what us three wanna do.
Well, I, your problem is, just so you know, um, I've done a lot of work.
I, I understand that, but you know what?
But my, my question was not meant intended to offend or intended to be defensive, just making sure that you have the information that you need.
I think we got the information.
Well, that's what she's saying, she's, she's got it there, do we want copies of that?
Well, yeah, just make the call.
That's, that's all, that's all I was asking.
All right, yeah, no, I mean, I mean, we know what we got cut.
Let's say, who'd want to reference it while you're talking to somebody or something?
Do you want, who do you, do you want it sent out?
Send it to the clerk.
Can you, Alex and Lisa, or you?
Send it to the clerk and then she can get it passed.
Okay, that's what we wanna do then.
Yeah, uh, so, before we adjourn with that in mind. Um, it's gonna be pretty busy next week, we're gonna, I don't know, we're talking about these special meetings and everything, you know. Personally, may, I might page it available. I don't know, do you, do you, what this is, what this is due when, April?
April, Friday, Thursday. Has to be, has to be, but, but there's also, hold on a second. Christie just explained, Martha, you're, Christie just explained, it's not, oh, you can pass it on March thirty-first and we get it done, right, it doesn't.
No, I understand, but what about the first week of March?
Well, again, if, if you, if you give them. If you give people, the, the departments and the officers, the officials, this is what you're gonna get. They have to go through and figure out where they're gonna shoot. Now, Christie and I, you know, and, and, but not everybody does that, and then, right now, central budget is closed. We're good for you, so that means they have to give to us where they're gonna cut it, we have to, Chrissy, I think we and Chrissy. Has to go in and reenter it, so that's very fine.
Uh, commissioners, Alex, you've done some pushing, we meet next week, Thursday?
Thursday might be tough for me, Friday.
How about Friday?
Friday, Friday.
And Alex and Johnson Bush.
We meet Friday in the, like. Late morning, yeah, ten-thirty if you wanna do that.
Ten-thirty or something, so you got some time, and it's not spending all day.
The only thing I see, Rick, I do see there's an animal welfare league meeting at two o'clock.
Oh, that's right.
That's a two on Friday, but if we met at ten-thirty, that should give you time to get there.
We just also need to prepare, Alex, you've done some pushing resources, I have to, I have not sent anything about what the HR process will look like in August. But I will tell you, once the board makes their decisions, if we get to point three, more than tasking people to look at layoffs. I have to do contract analysis on every single contract to figure out who can go, when they can go, that's going to be a substantial amount of work on HR, so just bear. I, we need to start kind of, if we're there, or if we're gonna be there, right, when we decide, right.
Right, I, I can tell you this much, I'm not laying a damn person off, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ride, we're gonna set a budget and ride it out. And we're gonna do it in the middle of the year, but there, there's no way, no, coming here and saying we're in that situation.
Right, I need, that's what, I need you to let me kind of bring that to the table with those processes would look like, and we'll look at all that when you're ready.
So, so next Friday at ten-thirty, us three. We should do a journey, so.
Second.
Mr. Verdana?
Yes.
Super boy?
Yes.
Yes.